Okay, any discussion on that motion to table?
We talked about one other program briefly and that was also tabled even for further discussion, much less action. And Ken, do you want us, it was the firearms competition.
Yeah, like Ken, if we could hang on for that for one second.
That was my fault.
I think our clerk is playing his role as parliamentarian correctly and that will, consider that out of order for the moment, but certainly we can do that in just a second. So we have a motion to table item B six.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were, my apologies.
Nope, that's, I'm sorry, it's B seven, consider approval of the addition of a show choir. We're going to table that item until after, until the November meeting, till that specific.
I think you need a vote to table it too.
Right, right, we need to do that. So that's the motion in front of us is to table it. So, any further discussion on whether or not to table this item?
Understood, we are not approving or tabling it.
Just tabling the item. Okay, that's the motion. All right. Hearing no more discussion, all those in favor of tabling the motion, of tabling the item signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, so this item will come back to the agenda in November. At this time, I think, James, if you wanted to add a comment, I'd be happy to entertain that about an additional item.
We don't have to over discussion.
James and Ken?
Ken, you just want to briefly mention what the topic is so we are transparent as to what has been presented to us, to us being the school district as a program.
Basically, it's informational, I guess, at this point.
Right.
We do have a staff member and the local gun club that are interested in sponsoring a Faribault High School team in the Minnesota Clay Target Shooting League, potentially in the future. So, and that's something that we could talk about at another meeting.
Great. And it was laid in our meetings and we thought that it deserved a fair amount of discussion and so we didn't take action supportive or anything, but I just wanted people to know that it is a
An item being discussed.
A topic of discussion.
Okay, excellent.
And I'd like to suggest that we bring it up at our next study, our work session.
For finance?
Is it?
Actually, for finance and for the board.
Or?
That's my suggestion.
Can you give us, what's the topic? You want to just specify?
The topic is, it's what play, play target league?
So it is, Ken. What's the actual, what's the actual terminology for the, for the new state high school league?
Well, yeah, it's not, it's not officially a state high school league yet for me right now. It's called the Minnesota State High School Clay Target Shooting League. They're not under the jurisdiction of the state high school league, although the state high school league is going to offer a one day event after their state tournament this year.
Okay, did you get that, Ken? All right, thanks.
Ken, if I could just ask you, before you sit down on that item, given the request to bring this to the next board work session, do you feel like you have the information you need to bring that to the board work session at this time?
And, actually, the staff member, Peter Jacobson, would love to come and talk about it.
Sure, okay, all right, thank you. So that seems like a reasonable. Sorry, thank you. Last item on the finance agenda is item eight B eight. Consider approval of frequently asked questions to be posted on the school district website. So Todd, maybe you want to say a little bit of some, a little bit about this?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be necessarily approved. I guess it probably should be a discussion item if you want to take a look at those or if you've had time to take a look at that data. It's just more or less making sure that what we've put out there is accurate and true. So it does not have to be something that you approve.
Can you restate once, what are we permitted to do as a board as far as publications handing out?
As long as they're all factual, they, you're okay with that. What we do with this process, and we kind of include it into the, there's a mailing that'll go out to all taxpayers, it shows the ballot and then also a statement from, from me that has to go through our attorney process. Same thing with these items, we go through our attorney process to make sure that they are factual and then they can go out on the website. So they go through a pretty thorough review before we send them out. So, that's the process that we go through in order to get these things out.
Is that what was passed out at the open houses?
Uh, yes, yep. Not the whole thing, just a few of those items were on there.
Yeah, but that's in our, that's in our realm to be able to do that. Just because we're providing information to the public.
That's correct.
This is pages eighty-three through eighty-nine of your board packet is, is the document that we're talking about.
I have one question, Todd. Didn't we decide to take second grade off?
We did, but we had to add a back. That's getting down, are you talking about the, I'm looking at the fact sheet right now, but for that piece, that, that was, that's not going to be talked about until later.
Oh.
So, that's under a different item, but we did add second grade because we could get to the one point, so.
Thank you, thank you, sorry.
Yep, that's right.
Todd, would you feel more comfortable if there was a formal action?
I'd feel more comfortable with it, yeah. I would. Just so you're supportive of me putting it on the website so I don't get criticized.
I would so move authorization of this being placed on the website.
Okay, so we have a, a motion to authorize the district to post the presented frequently asked question sheet on the district website. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on this item?
Just a question, I know we talked a little bit about leaving this labeled as a draft because it is a working document with potential revisions at any time. Was that, is that our feeling that we should leave it labeled draft as we put it on the website? Or does that make it look too, and I know I have voiced an opinion, it's probably not consistent even necessarily over time, but.
Well, with these bullet points, they would no longer be a draft. If I had to get any other facts, I think that the process would be to make sure you guys see it first before I put it on the website. So, I mean, there's other facts that are out there, but I think for the most part, these are the ones that I get questions about quite a bit. I am researching the expenditure question that's out there too, and as soon as I get that information, I'll, I'll bring it to one of the work sessions or the board, so you have that information.
Okay.
So that may have been assumed by everybody in the motion maker, the motion, that the draft would be taken off which we put on the website.
So to be clear, the draft will be coming off of this, this document at this time, should the board approve that to replace on the website. Further discussion on the side?
I have a question. Is this document for the meeting, Faribault Schools 2012 Levy Impact Information, where we're talking about potential improvements if the levy passes, does that replace some of the material on page seven of the draft document?
No, because that hasn't been approved by the attorney and there's, you want to make sure that there's, whenever you put data out there, that's a hundred percent factual. So that is information that the board decides and you haven't decided on all those different things, so I can't necessarily put that out there as fact.
I just, that's my point is that I think the, there needs to be some ongoing discussion of if the levy passes, how we might best benefit our students who came up in our curriculum committee that we had this evening, or earlier this afternoon, in that there are, for example, here on point two of this document, it talks about reducing and maintaining class sizes in elementary schools. Certainly a valid point, a valid concern with their issues about at the high school where we have a class of over thirty-seven. So, I think we need to make sure that we've taken as wide a view of possible improvements as possible and I'm, I'm a little bit uncomfortable specifying in total, you know, what those benefits will be. Certainly areas that we're, we're working on. So if this is not replacing page seven, then I'm very comfortable with what we're talking about.
Other comments or questions on this item at this time? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion and a second to approve the placing of this frequently, frequently asked questions list on the district website. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
No.
Mr. Clerk, would you please take a roll?
James Wood?
Aye.
Jerry Robichaud?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
No.
Jason Engbert?
Aye.
Jeff Davis?
Aye.
Tom Casper?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Mr. Chairman, the vote is six one in favor.
All right, motion carries. Next on the agenda is item eight C, the budget. We have an enrollment report. Colleen, I guess I would just start by asking, it looks like we are up significantly from our projected. What sort of impact do you expect that to have other than crowded kindergarten classrooms, which it already seems to be one of the issues showing up?
Okay, now you have to remember, this is a September first count. So what are, what's included in this count are all the new students who show up and also, we still have the students in here who may have left the district, so September one count is never one we trust in too much because we can keep those students enrolled for fifteen, up to fifteen days if we don't know that they've left the district or we haven't been notified that they've left. So, the October one count is really the one that we will hang our hats on as far as enrollment. So, while this looks really good, I don't think we can take it to the bank just yet.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or, I really, I was hoping you'd say we could take it to the bank.
Yeah, not yet.
Which is not your style.
Don't deposit it, yeah.
All right, other questions or comments from the board? All right, thank you, Colleen.
Yep.
No report on the financial report for, for this month. The, item eight C three, gifts and donations. We have a number of gifts. One from Adam, I'm sorry if I mispronounce this, Adam Cunnell, a wheelchair accessible table with a value of fifty dollars to support individuals with mobility issues. One from Lisa Benson who donated a trombone to the Faribault, to the FPS band. Is that supposed to be FHS?
Yes, oh, yep, FHS. Faribault Public Schools, I guess.
Faribault Public Schools Band, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I guess it is K-12, so.
Okay, to the band program, let's say. One from, so Howard the Children, otherwise known as Shaq, of three thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars for materials and training for Hazlewood based
OLS.
OLS Bully Prevention Program. Another from the Rice County Deputies Association Citizenship Fund for five hundred dollars. Again, materials for, and training for the Hazlewood based OLS Bully Prevention Program. Finally, Dragons Car Club, an amount of five hundred dollars, a donation to Mark Lesman's Automotive Program at Faribault High School to be used by the program in any way that it is needed. Of course, on behalf of the board, I know I say thanks on behalf of all of us to any time a community member steps forward to, to help serve the needs of our, our students in our schools, we certainly appreciate that. Any other questions or comments from the, from the board?
Just a question, Colleen, maybe you could answer this. The two donations dealing with the bullying prevention program, does that tie into our policy and our curriculum as relates to bullying? Yes, I'm talking to the other Colleen. That's right, we have two of us, I have to. Curriculum goes to Colleen.
Yes, it's a connection with our, the PBISS in middle school and doesn't.
Colleen, if I could ask you to walk up to the, to the microphone?
I mean, I respect the fact that these donations have been made, certainly.
Um, yes, currently we, we have the PBIS going on in the middle school and the OVS bullying program will make a connection with that and so, we're really happy to have, to have, be able to have that program aboard.
Good, thank you.
All right, I will entertain a motion to approve this, the acceptance of gifts at this time.
So moved.
Now do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a, a second to approve the acceptance of these gifts and donations. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. There's an other matters on this, but I don't think we have anything on that. Is that right? There's nothing under this? Okay. Okay, other committee reports. We have no report at this time from the insurance committee or the wellness committee, committee, the community education report from Ann Marie.
Hello, chair members. I would like to take the opportunity to talk to you about the Twenty First Century Community Learning Center program that we have. We've been a part of it for several years. I have spent a significant amount of my time in the past few weeks trying to get it, get the start and the development of a solid plan for, for all three middles, all three elementary schools, the middle school and the high school in terms of out of school time, after school programming. It is academic based, it's enrichment based, it's fund based, and we have many staff and students participating in this program. We reached out to over a thousand students last year in this programming. We have two more years of funding, so we hope to reach even more students this year and more next year. And it's just a terrific opportunity to engage disadvantaged youth and a more broad section of Faribault community in terms of K-12 youth. So it's just a terrific program. I just wanted to thank my staff. Martha Schultz is heading this up. She's the youth development coordinator and she's taken this on as a part of her duties. She's done a terrific job and all of the teachers and other staff that have taken this on have really committed time after regular hours to this program. So I just wanted to give you an update on that and highlight that. And our, and our catalog will be coming out early next week.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments? Moving along to item ten, other matters. Ten A is the canceling and scheduling of, of meetings for next Monday. So we'll be canceling a school board retreat that was scheduled for next Monday and in this place, we'll be putting a special school board meeting. Any, I'll entertain a motion to approve at this time.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the canceling of the school board retreat and to schedule a, a school board meeting to take place here in City Hall. Any questions or comments on, on the side?
The chairman, is that attached?
Say that again, Howard, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. We're approving the meeting. Do we have an agenda for that meeting? What's the purpose of that meeting?
As we talked about, the purpose of that meeting will be to discuss, to finalize and take action on the levy impact information that we'll also be discussing later tonight. So that will be on the agenda as well as an approval. Remind me, Colleen, what, what exactly that's called?
Preliminary levy certification.
There's a preliminary levy certification that we need to do before the election, so that can take place. That, that should be a short agenda item is my understanding, right? That should be a short one? Those are the only two things on that agenda at this time.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
All right, hearing no further questions or comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. We have some more rescheduling to do. We need to reschedule our October work session from October fifteenth to October twenty-ninth. This came about simply because of some conflicts.
Yeah, the work, the work session would go from October seventh to the fifteenth, or, sorry.
October one.
October first to the fifteenth, yeah.
October first.
To the fifteenth. So the work session would be October fifteenth.
Fifteenth. Okay. Did we also need to reschedule? Now you have to help my memory. Did we need to reschedule the October meeting as well?
Regularly.
Is that on here as an agenda item? I'm not.
Yes, it's, it's on the, it's on the.
On the same line.
It's on the same line.
It's in the same line.
I see, okay, I see. I, I misread that. Okay. So, again, to be clear for my sake and perhaps for all of our sa, so, excuse me, all of our sakes, the work session will be on the fifteenth.
Yep.
And the board meeting will be on the twenty-ninth.
Correct.
So everything is here correct. I just read it wrong and that, I'm sorry, I was the only one in the room confused and I apologize. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve at this time.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I, it'd be difficult for me to get from Lincoln, Nebraska in time for the work session on the fifteenth. I've been asked to come down and make a presentation at a conference that day, so I will do everything I can short of violating the speeding laws. Get here in time, but.
Noted.
You drive a Prius, I don't think you could, but.
You're right.
Any further questions or comments on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item ten C, approve the scheduling of public and school board open house at the Faribault High School Performing Arts Center for October twenty-fifth at seven o'clock.
We even, maybe a better word would be call it an open forum instead of an open house. But we're looking at October twenty-fifth as a, a date where if people from the public would like to come and discuss their concerns, they have questions about the levy, it might be a nice forum just for that piece. Gives people a chance to talk who are both in favor and against the levy to voice their opinions for you and it's actually scheduled meeting that all the board can hear. So, just a suggestion.
Will you go through some of the information that, document that'll be on the website also?
Yeah, yeah, I can do that presentation. And any other data that you want me to pull up, I'd be more than happy to go through.
Do we have somebody to facilitate it?
Uh, it was just me right now, but we certainly, if you want to facilitate it, we.
No, I'm just wondering, we should have another party?
Sure.
I'm just questioning it.
Yep. I was just going to present it as the factual information on the levy, what it's all about, time and place, what the, what the, the tax impact would be on the levy and the funds that would generate for the levy and things like that.
Maybe we can talk about it on the fifteenth.
Yeah, give you more ideas of what that amount would, or what that would.
Yeah, we need a facilitator for it.
All right. I don't think I've entertained a motion to approve, so I will at this time.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, we have a motion and a second for an open forum on October twenty-fifth at seven PM at the high school. Any other questions or comments on this item?
One question is, with the open forum is, where are the board members going to sit? Are they in the audience? Are they up on the stage? Or what are they, where are they? Is it questions of the board or questions of Todd or what's?
I think that we can, you want to iron that out at that work session to give me some, some details of how you want that set up? I guess I envisioned that you guys would be up on the stage with the audience questions, asking you guys questions or making comments to the board, coming up to a mic and then just verbalizing those concerns or, or whatever that might be. That's how I had envisioned it. And if we could put it on TV, that would even be a, a bonus. But we can maybe discuss the details as Howard said, on the fifteenth of October to decide how to do that.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this item? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And this brings us to item ten D, proposed agreement between ISD six-five-six and Local Seventy Educational Assistance.
And I think, Nicole, I don't know if I can put you on the spot on this, but do you want to, if you have questions, can they address it to you, Nicole? Are you okay answering some of these questions? I think there's some summaries on there, but any other specific questions, you can go ahead and, and talk to Nicole about it.
Any questions or comments on this item?
Have we made a motion yet?
Uh, no. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair, I vote we approve this item.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve.
Now we have questions?
Comments on, on the side?
What, what's of D for the educational EAs, what's the total money of their contract? I always ask the same questions every time, so.
Do we, we have a total, but we'd have to take the, we got the percentage, but you remember with the total dollar, no?
No.
I don't, we'd have to go back and look that one up, Richard. We just have the percentage.
Are you looking for the total per person or the total of the, their contract?
Like the EAs, if there's ten of them, if they get, you know, what's the total package?
Yep.
Dollar, bottom line.
I can get that for you, yeah.
Okay, how can we vote on this? We don't know that.
Um, well, it's certainly something.
I ask the same questions all the time.
Yeah, it's certainly something that, you know, if I had known earlier today, I could have gotten it for you. It's just at the office, so I can't get it on the spot, unfortunately.
What are the percentages, if you could share that?
The EA percent, it's a two-year total package of four point one nine.
And do you know how that breaks down over the two years? Okay.
Yeah, it's on the last item on your page. I don't remember four.
The wage, the wage breaks down, it's year one, it's one percent on wages and year two is putting five on wages.
Okay, I can see it here. Okay.
And do you know what the health insurance portion is right now?
Currently, the health insurance is one thousand fifty dollars per month and it increases to one thousand one hundred and eight dollars per month as a district contribution.
And it stays at that amount the second year?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, any further questions?
Mr. Chair, I'll bring up the point I did at the beginning of the meeting, that I'll still say I like Mr. Casper's idea, which I don't know, he, I don't know how he's going to vote on this, but of delaying this vote until after if the levy fails or passes, you know, well, how much money do we have? But, now, I'll be saying that for the next two items too, so.
Sure.
I'd like to speak to my own idea, I think. When we were discussing these possible unsettled contracts earlier in the year, I raised the, my concern then and my concern now is retaining and compensating adequately some very quality employees, but balancing that against our deficit. Mr. Olson made some points in a discussion that somehow the teachers are perhaps the guiding, become the guiding level for all the other groups. I don't know that for a fact. I suspect that, you know, there, there may be something to that. I'd like to state for the record that I don't believe that our employees are overpaid. I've seen them in action for almost forty years and they do incredible work. They in, deal with an incredible variety of situations and stresses and demands. And so, it is not in my consideration at all that they aren't deserving of this. Now, I am concerned that balancing our employees needs to also be balanced against our programming and that's the juggling act that we've been engaged in for the last number of years as a district. I am, I am concerned that if we approve these at this point. I am concerned that if we approve these at this point, that we are only gonna compound our difficulties if the levy does not pass. If the levy does pass, we have the ongoing need to balance fair compensation for our employees and programming for our students. And they are not separate issues. Hiring and keeping quality people has a direct impact on the quality of programming. Nor do I believe, as might have been suggested by comments who cite my earlier comments out of context, that, I'm sorry, I've lost my train of thought. But I did propose that we consider not settling these agreements until after the levy passed. I believe that was my comment earlier in the spring. We did negotiate in good faith and so I have very mixed emotions about voting to approve this at this point. But I guess I'm just trying to clarify what I was saying earlier and allow me to speak for myself. If you wanna cite my words, please cite all of them. End of comment.
Other questions or comments on this item?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, please.
How long have these negotiations been going on, Nicole? For these party meetings?
We submit, they submitted their letter to us last February. We officially started in around mid-April.
So, it's been a period of time that this negotiation has been taking place?
That's correct.
So, they've been without a contract since the start of this school year?
Yes, their contract expired July first in two thousand twelve.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments on this item?
What are the implications of not settling it now? I mean, I understand, one of them is if the levy doesn't pass, then, you know, there's a real concern about not passing this later on, then we're back to rebargaining. I also assume that they, their pay increase doesn't start until we approve it, is that right? And we're talking about basically kind of like teachers' assistance in the classroom? And we're talking about custodians and clericals and secretaries?
Yes, that's correct. If it's not, if it's not approved tonight, then they keep going status quo, working off of their expired contract.
I don't want the board to get the impression that these groups came in and we just gave in to them. I, I hope that's not the impression of the board because it was, I would say, an extremely difficult negotiations process. If you look at, if you look in comparisons and the guideline is the five point seven that the, the teachers received, this is considerably lower, which is extremely difficult, not just for the groups to swallow, but, you know, quite honestly, for us to swallow too. So, I don't, I think that just the task itself, I think you have to understand that this process started back in April and we were finally at a point where we think we can settle with these people without having repercussions.
Mr. Chair, another issue that I think needs to be presented is that the district was negotiating in good faith. And I don't suspect that any time, was there any statement made that one of the parameters was whether or not the levy would pass or not? That if, in fact, all of a sudden the board says, we're not gonna approve this, we're back to the negotiating board. And by the way, wait until after November to see if the levy passes, then you're opening up the whole issue of what is true faith, good faith bargaining. We could end up paying more, absolutely.
I, you know, and also just remind us at this time that our team of Todd and Nicole were negotiating in parameters that we asked them to.
Nicole.
We asked them to negotiate with parameters to do their best to stay under the teachers' negotiation, which is breaking with tradition, for sure. I think this made their job certainly more difficult, but they understood and we understood. I think everyone understood the ramifications of that. And so, I think one thing for us to consider is that what's come back to us is in fact what we asked our team to, to work for us for. And I think this really goes to Jerry's comments here of negotiating in good faith. For us to delay this at this time, I think sends a message that we're not being open with the community. This is one of the difficult things politically, sure, it would be easier to not do this at this moment. But I think we need to be honest and open with the community about what, what has, where we have been at. So, I, I think it could easily be perceived as, as trying to hide behind that. And I think we could lose an awful lot of faith with, with people who've come to a bargaining table and settle with us. Colleen, please.
I did find an email, 'cause I can access my emails, so I did find an email on the base. And so, for the EAs, it's, it amounts to one thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars per person in salary and benefits at four point one nine.
And then, how many employees?
Over two years, ten.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, again, I'm not in favor of balancing our budget on the backs of our employees. And I think we wanna send a message that we do value what they do. And, you know, if we, if we postpone it, we don't pass the levy, then you have a harder time selling that. And I think we need to make a decision on it. Go forward.
Mr. Chairman, I, responding to Mr. Bodie's comment, I don't think we should balance the budget on the backs of the taxpayers.
All right, any other questions or comments at this time? All right, hearing none, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote to consider the proposed agreement between I S D six five six and Local Seventy Educational Assistance. Mr. Clerk.
All those in favor, is the question? Right?
Yeah, exactly, all those in favor.
All right, James Wolf?
We did do a motion in a second, right? We have a motion in a second.
Yes or no? James Wolf?
Yes.
Jerry Robichaud?
Yes.
Richard Olson?
No.
Jason Ingraham?
Yes.
Deb Davis?
Yes.
Tom Casper?
Yes.
Howard Bodie is yes. Mr. Chairman, the vote in favor is six one.
All right. Item ten E, consider proposed agreement between I S D six five six and Local Seventy Custodians. This one, as I look at the bottom of the, now I'm looking at the, I think this is right, the two-year financial package is four point one six percent total over two years. That's a one and a quarter percent wage increase for the first year and a one and a quarter percent wage increase for the second year with some increases to health insurance costs making up the difference to get us to the total package of four point one six percent. Questions or comments on this item? Well, let's actually start with a motion.
More approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion?
And my same comments apply to this item too.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
No.
Motion, let's go ahead and do a roll call.
James Wolf?
Yes.
Jerry Robichaud?
Yes.
Richard Olson?
No.
Jason Ingraham?
Yes.
Deb Davis?
Yes.
Tom Casper?
Yes.
Howard Bodie is aye. Mr. Chairman, six one in favor.
All right. Next item on the agenda, ten F, consider the proposed agreement between I S D six five six and Local Seventy Clerical and Secretaries. This one?
Four point oh nine.
Four point oh nine percent. Very similar, a one and a quarter percent wage increase in year one and a one and a quarter percent wage increase for year two with health insurance increases largely making up for the difference between the wage increases and the four point oh nine percent over two years. I'll entertain a motion and a second, entertain a motion.
So move.
We have a second, we have a motion and a second. All those, well, sorry, any further discussion?
Is the dental insurance, I, I think the previous one, year two said remains at forty dollars. Is forty dollars added? Is that forty dollars year one and another forty dollars year two?
The same for both years.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, my same comments apply, but again, I forgot to mention the last item. What's the total money bottom line for number E and number F? No, just total, total. Take the per person times number of people. Give me the bottom, bottom line. How much?
The total of the, okay.
This whole package.
The clerical?
Yeah.
The additional, the base was one million four thirty-three, four twenty-seven. Four point oh nine percent is fifty-eight thousand six twenty-seven, which is one thousand eight hundred and ninety-one per person over two years.
And then you cust-
Custodians?
Custodial, the base is one million two eighty-four, six ninety-five. Four point one six percent is fifty-three thousand four forty-four, or four forty-three. Two thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars per person over two years.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote.
James Wolf?
Yes.
Jerry Robichaud? Richard Olson?
No.
Jason Ingraham?
Yes.
Deb Davis?
Yes.
Tom Casper?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Mr. Chairman, six one in favor.
Okay, next item, ten G, consider approval of letter of understanding between the Faribault Public Schools and the City of Faribault. Todd?
Let me grab it here. Oh, thi- this is just a, this is a letter of contract just to hook up the water pieces and the sewer for the addition.
And the addition?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and all the costs for this one, we paid for by the booster.
I better check, hold on. No, this is a different one. I'm sorry, we looked at the wrong one.
This is a softball complex.
Yeah, this is softball, softball complex. This is a letter of understanding. If you just, do you have that, that handout?
So, we're just giving them easement to?
Yes, that's it. This is a different contract, sorry.
Okay, okay.
I agree to allow them to install water and sewer lines across our property.
Going across our property, yes.
All right.
And they maintain this themselves?
I, yes, I assume they do.
Assume?
Colleen, do you have an idea of what they do? I haven't looked at this for so long.
The, the letter of understanding between us and the city and them putting.
The softball complex utility letter?
We talked about this, we talked about this at finance committee meeting.
No, no, no.
No?
Yeah, we talked about it someplace.
Ah, this is, I've never heard this.
But we're talking, you're probably referring to the fitness center.
That's what I was.
This is not the fitness.
No, no, but anyway, go ahead.
Let's come back. We haven't looked at this for a long time.
We've talked about this, but I believe the city is adding some restroom facilities down near Alexander Park. And so, they needed an easement to get the sewer lines and water lines in because it runs through our property. So, in exchange for the easement, we're allowing, we're allowed to use those facilities when we're down there with our sports and activities.
And do you know, as far as the maintenance go, if they do decide to put those pipes in, are they responsible for maintaining those?
As far as I know, yes.
I, I don't see this on, on this document. I don't see it. I don't see it at all. If there, if something breaks the sewer water, who's gonna repair it? Who's gonna maintain it?
Do you remember the timeline?
Their lines.
Yeah.
Doesn't reach our lines just 'cause it goes across our property.
Yeah.
What we are doing is granting an easement.
Yeah, that's all this is doing. This isn't.
These lines are not ours in any fashion.
If you feel as a board that you need another document that addresses that, we certainly could get that.
Well, I think that would be, I actually don't think that that's such a bad idea to get that confirmation from the city to make sure that there is, it's their responsibility for maintaining that through the easement, not ours. I think that's your point, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
That it's not our responsibility.
Can we move it, providing that we get that? We move past it, providing we get, we get added that they maintain it.
It's not covered by the statement that says the construction of the restroom concession and maintenance facility?
No, that's, that's describing.
That's an actual garage.
Okay, so there's three things that they're going to construct, okay.
Yeah, you can make the motion pending that, that that is happening. If that's not happening, then
That we are not.
Then we'll rip up the contract. If that's what you want. Otherwise, if you're okay with it, then.
You know, it's just that line or two, saying they are responsible for the maintenance of whatever they put on their property.
All right, well, I'll entertain a motion at this time of that nature.
I vote that we approve this pending an addition, additional statement from the city indicating that they would cover the maintenance of the lines.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Superintendent Evaluation Report.
I finally have all of the reports, the evaluations back. In the process of consolidating, I will then have a meeting with Tom and Jason as a subcommittee of the board to take a look at it. And hopefully, we'll bring a recommendation for a closed session to do the evaluation at the, probably in October.
In October, okay. Any questions or comments for Jerry on that process? Okay. Thank you, Jerry. Item ten I, consider the consequences of the levy passing or failing in a discussion item. So, you have a handout in front of you, that was in front of you when you came to see me, similar to the one that we looked at the last time with some changes. Todd, do you wanna walk us through your thinking on this and where we're at?
And then, I think, if you have questions, just go ahead and ask Colleen if there's financial questions for that, but I'll go through this. My focus was to look at the program cuts and then also do some impact statements as what this means for this potential reduction. Page one and two, these were the discussions that we've had with the, with the school board last spring and then also the two groups that met and then also the work session of some of the positive things that could occur if the levy passes. And those are, they've been repetitive quite a bit and I don't know if I need to review those or not. Maybe we can go right to the cuts. Do you have questions on those?
You're asking if we could review the
The ads.
The, the positive statements here?
Yep.
Are they, okay.
My, my concern is with number two. Have we looked at and discussed the impact? The curriculum committee had some discussion of it this afternoon about the class sizes in secondary schools, middle school and high school. Had a couple of specific examples brought up. middle school and high school, had a couple of specific examples brought up, so.
I can answer that question real quickly, Tom. The part of the high school, if you add more, the electives in the technology area, or the technical education areas for the vocational pieces, and then if classes are added in the art, is going to naturally reduce some of those class sizes at the high school. Okay? And then the conversation we had before is because the, the, and thinking that we're in kind of a short timeframe here too, that if we generically say that we hire three teachers in the elementary school to help class size reduction, that would give us some flexibility in determining where those specific barriers would be after the curriculum committees reviewed it and after go through this process.
I understand, but I guess what I'm saying is by specifying elementary, we precluded adding them, are we precluding adding them on the secondary level? We have some issues about maintaining the middle school model at the middle school. They've suffered some significant staffing cuts over the last couple of years. There are some class size issues at the high school that may or may not be more significant than elementary. But it, we haven't, to my knowledge, that, at least on the board level, we haven't had that kind of information presented or in the curriculum committee, that would be part of what we're, would want to look at before we're making any recommendations regarding levy passage or not passage impact on our program.
Right, and quite honestly, I don't know if we have enough time in these two weeks to have that discussion. Or, actually, it's one week, you guys are going to be approving these, these reductions. I think you have a lot of time between after the levy has been proposed until next year, if the levy passes, to have these discussions.
And, and that's fine, I just, I don't want to do something now that's going to preclude or limit our possible choices in terms of improving programming in the future, if, if the levy should pass. I mean, we need a, a good, open, honest, transparent debate about our priorities, what changes have happened in, in recent years and where we want to be in the current, the current situation. And I don't, I'm not saying that we could do that. What I'm worried about is by saying, number two, by reducing and maintaining current sized classes in the elementary schools, what are we doing to the middle school and high school?
I don't, I'm not arguing with you.
Well, that, that would be my concern in terms of, of publishing this. To say that we're going to reduce or maintain current class sizes in Faribault Public Schools, I have no problem with that. If that, if we choose then to apply that to the elementary level, then that's a choice we make. But should we, upon further information and so on, decide to do something at the middle school or the high school, I'd like to, you know, I want to maintain that option.
Yeah, and you know, the, the limited funds that we have, I, I, we're kind of dr- doing that whole thing about spreading it through the K through twelve curriculum. So if we put everything, if we put, for example, the three additional teachers in the middle school and the high school, now we have nothing in the elementary school. So, I mean, that's the, the thinking process, I think that you guys went through last spring and, and it also, but you're right. We're trying to get as specific as we can without locking us down to what really has to be.
In recent weeks, I've had a number of conversations with citizens. Some of whom have had children in the district, some of whom had children in the district. And they're looking for reasons to support the levy. Now, while they recognize the, the ideal of supporting every child in our district, they are also concerned that there be something to protect and/or restore and/or improve, that there be some options for every child in the district. And, but I'm concerned, as I think they are, in saying that if we specify that only elementary might benefit from these three additional FTEs, that we're basically saying, okay, middle school and high school students, we don't have anything more for you. You're going to have to live with what we have. And they're looking for reasons, and I think their own students, their own grand students, whatever, are those reasons.
But items four and five speak to the high school and to the high school and middle school specifically. We're just talking about, I mean, with three positions, we're not talking about twenty new positions, I think we
No, I, I'm, I, I guess I'd have some of the same concerns. I know that we're looking for specific things to present to the public as a benefit for passing this levy. And I do, I, I recognize number four talks about art in the high school. And I, I have no problem with that, enriching the music program in the high school, I have no problem with that. And I have absolutely no problem with improving class size in the elementary school, all those are great things. But there are other things on this list, or not on this list, and I'm, I want to provide the most motivation possible for the most people to support this levy. And I guess I'm not seeing as much of that as I would like in these specifics, and I realize you have a very short amount of time and a huge task. But I'm not criticizing that, but I'm-
I think though, that we started this process in, in April, and so we've gone through a lot of these different ideas and we just, we're just trying to put everything together, the common themes that have come through with each of the different discussions that we've had. These are recommendations on the entire administrative team. So that whole piece has come through, and we've had different teacher groups talk about these different, we just had an issue with kindergarten classroom in the, in the curriculum committee of how large those classes are. So I, you know, it's not, I just want to make sure you understand, it's not just something we threw together just because of a short distance, but it's an accumulation of thoughts that have gone through since actually April and May, when we started talking about, can we buy from this? But can there be other improvements? I mean, we can look at it for a longer period of time if you'd like, that's fine. But I, I think that at some point, you have to make a decision on what will the, the operating referendum get us. It's just, quite honestly, it's just not a lot of money left over from the operating referendum after you avoid the cuts. So we're trying to be realistic, and at the same time, we want to try to be specific enough where I think we've captured a lot of what the, the public has said. So if that's right or wrong, that's, that's where we are right now.
You have an idea how much difference it is between avoiding, once we take care of not cutting what we want to cut, if it passes on, how much would we have left approximately?
It's about six, five to six teachers.
Worth.
Yep.
So I don't, Mr. Chair, I don't know how much we want to get into wordsmithing, but I would just say that the label on number three, and maybe it's based on a phone call I had, that why, we have a vocational, well, it's now a college, but why is a high school spending limited resources in the technical area? And I, I like a lot of the ideas, but I think the label here is a mil- little misleading, and I'd like to emphasize more the STEM ideas than calling it career and technical education for what that's worth.
I, I think that's actually a good idea, I agree with you. I think I would love to see a robotics course, I'd love to see some of the engineering pieces and some of the other computer pieces that are out there. I think that's a, a very good suggestion, we can put it on there. That's our thoughts too, and I know Mr. Turtles talked about some of those things of service learning, and those are programs that would attract kids. But it's a good idea. But there's going to be a lot of those ideas coming up that we want to try to get in there, but we don't want to step across, as you said, Tom, where we're promising something we can't deliver.
Other comments and questions about these potential improvements?
I just think it's important that we don't give the impression that there's a lot of extra money there after we make these cuts, after, if we cover, if we can avoid making the cuts, you know, really, that's a small reserve to have to deal with situations as they arise in our own advice.
I think, perhaps to address that, that good point, I think Howard, I think perhaps at the, the top, before we list the items, can we simply put a, a simple sentence or two that talks about sort of what the size of these additional things, all of these ideas are, so that people can see the size of, of what would be added in its entirety and don't, you know, look at lots of long paragraphs and have a sense that we're looking at adding twenty teachers, but the size that would be-
Yeah, Colleen and I had that discussion too, and we're going to look for some guidance from you, how you would like this to be written and presented for you. The reason why we did the paragraph form today was so that you have some sort of background of what's been discussed. But if you have a, and Colleen, I think we, we've had, and I, we have an idea of how we would like to present it to you next Monday too, but I thought maybe we could go through these items first
Okay.
and then talk about that, that might lend itself to something.
Okay.
Question if I can, Mr. Chair.
Please.
I agree with James, the fact of focusing more on the STEM concept and career technical issues. The other thing is, and, and just a question, clarification, was there any consideration given into perhaps adding another AP class?